... Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a regime and justice for all.
Anyway, good to see you all again. Haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, perfect again.
You all look pretty healthy.
Doing all right.
Okay.
Okay, so.
What's happening, Billy?
You're on, Jim.
Uh, we have one abatement. And that's for the Red House. There was a little bit of a tax below the retro property. It's a catch-up. And, uh, when all the dust settles on the acquisition.
That's for the Reds here.
Yeah. For $287.82.
I will make a motion to accept the abatement.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
That's it.
Good.
That's all I got. Any questions?
Go Bean. Nope.
We have something for you. You don't know about it yet.
Oh, yeah?
We have one. Here's one for you, Dan. I'm Carol.
Thanks, sir.
I'll take any of those.
I'll get your one.
Oh, you're giving out the S.T.'s Facebook. This is not part of the slot.
I know. I know. There's something like.
Okay, so we're gonna close this session meeting. Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
We're gonna open the slot board meeting.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Yes, I think.
Drive safely.
I'd like to make a motion to sign the warrants. What? Oh, did you have first?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We're just signing, are we?
Well, you're.
Or do we have to pledge undivided attention to the American flag and?
No, just us.
Just us.
This is gonna be your devotion to us over there.
Oh, absolutely. And I have not now, nor have I ever been a communist. I just want you to know that. Close! No, no, sick heart.
Okay, so.
So we have to reappoint the chair and vice chair.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Carol Dennis to the chair.
I second it.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion unanimously. Mr. Wagner, vice chair.
I'll second it.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye, yeah.
Now, as.
Such a surprise.
As newly appointed, uh, vice chair, starting, my add, Carol, now year nine.
You said year nine?
Yes.
No, if you stick this out, we could have a 10-year birthday cake.
Yes.
Oh, good.
We'll see what comes out of the next year, that's for sure.
That's right. That will be the 20, $64,000 question.
Being that with my continued, continued power, I would like to make a motion to sign the warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
And while our careless leader finds the proper paperwork, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 3rd as written.
I would second that.
All in favor? I'll make. Comatose, I do.
She's still somewhat heavily sedated, so I told her. Own business. We have a boundary agreement to sign.
I'll serve as the notary on the documents, so. The other party's already signed and it's been notarized.
So do we have a motion to sign the boundary agreement?
Come on.
Second.
All in favor?
Out with the old, in with the new. We have a discussion and review of the DEP what we're putting in plant inspection. But I'm sure Renee's happy to talk about it.
It's gonna be more and more exciting.
It's pretty much the same as it's been. They're still waiting for our M-Hawk tank replacement desperately. I got word from the plant operator this week that he has been told at the end of August the cars are supposed to be here. Of course, we've been told that they would be here in the spring and then they were gonna be here at the end of July. So we're waited with, uh, we're waiting with data for.
I'm sure the contractor is very happy.
Yes. We're, our, our chemical budget will be happy once. Once these tanks are operating.
Well, we're still within budget?
Well, it's a brand-new budget, so. We weren't last year, no, we were over on the chemical line. Because they have to put so much chlorine.
Right. Oh, I see.
To meet the DEP numbers.
So the chlorine goes into the tanks?
Yes. Well, I don't know.
You used it up. That was it. That was it.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
No sewer treatment 101. Kevin, you're up.
No run over? Is that what you're saying?
I actually have three out of the road. One is ACO.
Bean, come on. Mostly because they can hear better.
Good.
First is ACO. I have issued a summons. I'm not gonna say the name because it is still.
American, no, animal control officer.
Animal control officer.
Good.
I issued a summons. There is going to be a complaint coming in about the summons. So giving you a heads up. Renee has the report. If you choose to look at it.
And?
The dog was at large. He says it wasn't his dog. It's one that looks like his dog in the same one-mile radius. But there are no other dogs that look like his.
And didn't hurt anybody?
No, it was just in the road. But it's the third time I've been there since I've started.
Oh, which might have been.
So it's the first time he's been cooperative. Last time, he said his dog had been sick and it couldn't have been his. Gave him benefit of the doubt. This time he said his dog wasn't there. He kicked me off the property so I couldn't come on. And that if I came on again, he'd tell the sheriff or trespass.
So what does, what does happen if the dog isn't being taken care of properly? Do they be taken away from you or something?
It would end up being that, but in this case, he's not taking care of it. It's just, he's letting it run loose. But he has kicked me off the property.
And there's a, there's a law in town that you have to.
Yes, it's a lease law.
Right?
Yep, state law too.
So there's no question about that.
And if they're walking a dog, leash law, but what if it's under control, the dog? Because I've always wondered about that.
Is controlled.
Right, Maine, it's just under control.
So if they, they're under control, they don't have a leash, we're good too, right?
Yep. He is, he's nowhere near it, so. It was almost a mile away from the residence. Where I saw, where two different people saw it.
Running wild and free.
Yep. So just give you a heads up on that. Next, I handed out a law that was passed that hits, that partially takes effect August 23rd and then fully next July in the state. That has to do with code enforcement. It basically says that if you have a residential lot, you can build up to two more residential structures on that same lot. And that you as a town can't do anything about it.
No matter how s- how big a lot is?
Nope.
No lot restriction?
Nope.
Then we can build.
The only restriction that they put into it was that it has to be shoreline zoning regulations.
Has to be shoreline zone.
That was, um, that was the legislators and governors' attempt on the housing shortage. And that allowing second residences on existing lots offers opportunities for exactly that, in group housing opportunities, whether it be family or not. But that is the reason that, you know, that was the, just behind allowing two residences on existing lots.
Saying no.
And, and it may be a very noble.
Three separate residences on one lot. Wow.
Which brings up issues of whether it's a subdivision. If that's the case, then they have to meet those regulations. But it also is being contested on constitutionality because it takes away from home rule. They're saying that towns must do this. They're not providing any type of monetary compensation or anything like that. But there is a group of 10 towns, which is where this letter came from down in southern Maine, that are putting together.
They're not being happy for that, I imagine.
That are putting together a amendment to the law so that it would only apply to cities that are over 10,000 in population. So take it from everything in the state down to all the different cities.
Now presumably, if, if a town, if this happens within a town and you run into the shoreline zoning or flood plain, that would supersede any of this.
Correct.
Okay, and if a town, small town such as the back, were to come up with a rule that would contradict this rule and let's say would be more strict. If I understand correctly, we take precedence over the state normally.
No, normally.
Normally.
They wrote this law so that you cannot make it more strict.
That's the whole point of it, being.
They've made it necess- they've made that.
They took that right away from the town.
In the shoreline zone, the DEP actually hasn't charged that.
Yeah.
And they actually specify in the law that you must meet DEP specifications.
Okay.
So they're, they're allowing themselves to make rules on it, but not you as a town.
Okay. That's a sticky wicket.
But spreading that way is not.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think you're more than.
This one has a lot of other ramifications.
Yes.
Because of all the different parts. To that intertwine with that. So it's just something to kinda keep you guys aware of.
It's certainly not gonna make your job much easier.
No.
Well, thank you for bringing that. I think.
This is the better of the two things I have to code enforcement, that makes you happy.
Okay, what's the next one? What's the third one?
The next one is there is a property for sale down on Water Street 52. It's almost across from the library. It's the existing building that's there.
Yes, yes.
And there are a couple of different people who are looking at the property. But they need to have a definition as to what a business is or what would be considered commercial. Because that building sits over the water, so under DEP regulations, the shoreline zoning again, it has to be commercial on the first floor. The upstairs is grandfathered as an apartment. One of those.
You're talking about the old thing?
Yeah, that is a.
But they never allowed anybody to.
That has a foundation on that.
They never allowed anybody to live above it?
No, but Hadley lived there. It, it has an apartment that's existing.
See, there's a full foundation under two-thirds of it.
Okay, anyway, so.
The question is, and I've brought it to the planning board, who asked me to bring it to you, is, is an Airbnb considered commercial? And then I also had a phone call after the planning board meeting as to, is a writer considered a commercial venture?
A what?
Writer.
An author?
An author, a person who's a writer. Yeah, she wants to move here, buy that, but she is a writer, does consulting of some kind. So it would be like a home office.
It would be a business, however, on the bottom floor.
Definition of commercial is something that you can walk, a public can walk into and go.
And what I've done.
I would agree with that, Carol.
So far, I've, I've emailed the town attorney for some of these questions and I got an auto reply back that she's on vacation.
Okay, right.
If you want some, if you want a delay. I mean, I don't know how much authority the slot board has over that kind of decision.
Now, I also think that that's another sticky wicket between us and the planning board. Uh, and.
Well, they, they asked for our opinion. I think all we can render is an opinion.
Well, basically, from the planning board, really doesn't have to say. That man does. For the DEP.
The ordinance.
And because there's.
For the, the chair.
And as I understand.
That was pointed out to you last year.
I think a commercial business normally in my, which is my opinion would be that the public would walk in hours of operation and it's open to the public.
Now, would that be insane?
And it's this exchange of, yeah.
My understanding is you can't live over the water, correct?
Normally. That building is an exception.
It's grandfathered.
Because of the apartment, but the downstairs still has to be commercial.
Let me repeat. No one ever lived there over the, legally?
Ever?
Ever.
It's a really old building.
Yeah, yeah, it, ever.
Well, so you would know that they'll look like landmarks, but I think they did a lot of history.
In that respect, I would not grandfather in anything.
Yeah, it was an illegal.
I don't think anyone's lived there for 30 years, anyway.
Yeah, no. I, I know that Hadley and her husband were up there quite frequently and all, for all extents and purposes, kind of living there, but it was like, you know, on the hush-hush. And we'd ever said anything because we liked it. But never legally did they live there. So for all extents and purposes, it has never been a residence.
Been made to look like an apartment doesn't mean it was an apartment.
I don't remember if anybody lived there, not to be honest, 40 years ago. But it needed to downwind and walk.
Uh.
The Atlantic Coffee House.
My question would be, the last owner, did they buy it as a building with an apartment?
No. They bought it as a restaurant.
They bought it as a restaurant.
And now is it being sold as a building with an apartment?
But, well, how? How is that possible?
Oh, that is in the, oh, so it's actually being misrepresented.
Did what's been ever resolved from that? Yale?
No, no.
No, Yale was allowed to have cer- certain, um, equipment for his brewery, which is why he moved across the street.
Yeah.
He originally owned that. So is it the, is it the description in the real estate listing that says it's an apartment?
Yeah, that's how they're building it and that's how they're showing it.
But that, but that's really up to, up to the year of the town.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
They tried to say the same thing down there in the water.
Let's see, once again, we have nothing that says in, in the town what's commercial and what isn't.
As soon as you take money.
I mean, commercials should be a definite. There should be a definition of commercial.
The attorney will look at what we have on the books for law and Kevin has a, a legal, legal, um, line item. So that's what that's for, so these questions can help, so it helps take it off the table.
And that would help us going forward on Water Street.
Exactly.
That we need to have some kind of precedent set here.
Yeah.
And I think there are many other coastal towns that are gonna be smack dab in the middle of this.
And the thing is, the state does, intentionally does not declare what the definition of an Airbnb is.
Yes, yes.
Because they leave it to the towns.
Yeah, and that, oh, thanks a lot.
And you would have.
No, I think an Airbnb is, I think the larger question is, is it safe to have residential? See, Airbnb is residential, so you're, you're looking at two things here. You're looking at, it cannot be a residential at all.
But Airbnb is a business and file business taxes.
Yeah, Airbnb.
Airbnb is a business.
Yeah, it is a business. It was money exchange.
But it's a residential business.
It's a business.
We tax them.
Sticky wicket here.
Airbnb. Airbnb's your tax 9%.
Our children, one person speaking at a time.
Yes.
Airbnbs differ from person to person. Some people live in the building and rent out like a room. Or, or other people have the whole house and rent it all out as a B and, as an Airbnb. So that's where the confusion comes.
Well, and some towns have ordinances that Airbnbs can only be occupied six months of the year.
Exactly.
Where there has to be a resident in the building.
And that's the planning board's purview, is to adjust, make edits to the, whatever we have for ordinances and make those definitions. It's gotta become current.
And it has to be for this town.
Right.
In this town, this is what an Airbnb is.
We're missing, we're missing the point about can you even reside in that building? Forget the Airbnb.
According to Shoreline, it's not even not. Depends on what this town sets.
I think on the basis of the town's history, you cannot.
Well, according to shoreline zoning.
Piling, so it's safe.
If it doesn't have an existing apartment, but without knowing the history until tonight.
Right.
Until tonight, it was a grandfathered apartment.
Yeah.
So, and what the owners are saying is that there's been somebody staying in it.
I think you have to look at the property file.
Yes, yes, that's a good idea.
Do you have the erected date?
Yeah.
Look at the property file. Look at follows the Bs and C's.
So, needless to say, we have got more to do. Yes, right?
I'm guessing the building was built before 1950.
Yes.
Way more than that.
Yeah, so how do we know nobody lived there?
It was right next to the Dodge building, so.
Any of those you could live above because it was on the ground.
Well, it's one that. Do you have a kind of basement?
It's got a foundation.
Like, actually.
Not on all of it.
Do you remember what it was there?
Not on the whole thing, only the silver part, right?
The old Atlantic House.
The old Atlantic House. The old Atlantic House, the one that was Hadley's.
Oh, no, gosh, it's a hill. I don't, but can I ask one thing? What are you talking about Airbnb? I have a house that Airbnb. What are you talking about?
We're just saying that there is no clear definition about Airbnb.
Yeah.
Sometimes people live in the home and rent out a room, call it an Airbnb. Some people live in the house for six months and then go and call it an Airbnb. There's not a clear definition.
Whether or not it's commercial.
From an Airbnb to like a regular B&amp;B, like a Peacock House or an Home Board. So it's, this is our opportunity.
Well, at one time you had 60 Airbnbs and moved out.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, it's, it, this may be Lubeck's golden opportunity to create a definition.
So we wait for the lawyer?
Yeah, I think.
Find out whether you can live in a building that.
I think, or if we can stop, it'd be more my question to the lawyer, if it's a grandfathered thing, can we do anything about it?
Yes.
But they're saying it's grandfathered, but where there's no proof that it's been doing that.
But there's no proof that it isn't either, you know? But that's, that would be my argument, you know what I mean, that like you aren't, like you haven't been here long.
But nobody knows if anybody lived in it before 1950 or not.
I tell you, who would know? Is we're out of court.
Yep.
He would know.
Yeah, he would.
Yep.
Guaranteed. He would know.
But I still think the bottom line, we have to come up with a definition and we have to go to the lawyer. And if we have to create a definition, then we create a definition.
We can go to the lawyer and see if she needs, you know, see what we have on file, on record, and then let her advise us what.
And what is, and what is the question to the lawyer?
Well, Lubeck does.
You wanna make a nice succinct question so she doesn't charge us a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they'll let Kevin come up with us and message John.
Yeah, well, since Lubeck doesn't have a clear definition, we need a clear definition.
Commercial.
Yes.
Yeah.
And he's already.
And the grandfathering.
I actually.
Works for Lubeck.
I asked Kevin when he first came to me for this, he actually gave me an email in writing and I just simply forwarded all that, that to the lawyer.
Yeah.
That's where we are right now.
We don't do anything to the lawyer.
Right.
And I can understand a grandfather, but unless there's nothing to grandfather.
Right, yeah.
And that would be inaccurate.
So that's, so we'll have an.
How's that, is that a catch?
That's not where I expected it to be. Yeah. We still make two people not very happy.
Yeah, well, hopefully the lawyer won't be long and we'll have some guidance around what we can and can't do.
I expect next week.
I, I, it's gonna end up with transfer of money, you know, like whatever you get money for, then it's commercial.
You're saying it can be bought?
No.
It's kind of the way I would.
Well, isn't, isn't, isn't it a little bit of a bigger question, however, because of the building itself and because if you can't be residential with water?
Yes, I think that's the big question.
Right, it's a bigger question. It's a specific building that we have.
It doesn't matter. Is it, or is an Airbnb a business? It's not the, it's not the main question.
Can somebody in that building live there?
The question is if you have a residence, then you'll have to deal with the Airbnb.
That particular building.
Is there any grandfathering on shoreline?
Well, and, and then you've got this question of Jim hires. Who has people living there?
It meets the DEP's definition of a business.
Yeah, well, I don't think that's the problem. The problem is can they just live there to begin with? Is it safe? Is it proper? And then you can worry about whether we can deem the Airbnb commercial. First, we need to make sure you can sleep in the building to begin with and not blow down the Narrows to Camp Abello.
And has it been?
Here's the question about residential.
Yeah.
Where would you, or he, or whomever park? If it's residential? There's no parking.
There's no parking, absolutely.
There's absolutely no parking.
No, across the street of the library.
See, but that's the library's parking.
That's not public parking, that's public parking.
Yeah, overnight, public parking.
Parking, public parking.
Because we don't have a state, that one has.
Just during the, uh, summer, winter months, November to April is the only time.
Couldn't.
The streets can't, but the parking lot can.
So you can park in the, well, your parking lot, public parking lot. Public parking lot, you can park there. So that would be the parking space for that.
Yeah, that's awful. First come, first served.
Let's get an electric car that can charge stuff.
Well, we'll see what the lawyers say. Yep. All right, I'll let you all know.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
No, you've been less of a fun.
Thank you, brother, very good.
Yeah, and you have brought the good ones tonight, boy. That's what the planning board said too.
You're on to your next meeting, aren't you?
No, what? Actually, it got canceled, so.
Oh, great, good for you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. You're doing a great job. We didn't give them much answers, but they were comfortable.
Why do you think we all have our, like, we're all.
I think that's the right thing to do.
County Council, Governor, it's up to me. Nancy went to that meeting, right?
I did, and I actually bought some stuff to share with the shares. You didn't have to answer your question.
Did they ever get a directive?
No. Well, some of that.
Well, they haven't made that decision yet.
They got the letter.
There's a letter here, Nancy.
Madam.
Is that the one you're talking to?
Well, I wanted to show the agenda.
Madam, Jim, do you have a question in the audience?
No.
Recognizing.
I just, to add to what was going on with the, can they live above, can they live below? I'm reading a real estate listing for Water Street property that says, uh, Austin. That the second floor offers a live-in or expansion opportunity with the exterior state of the United Square of Light Campus. Says the possibility of the dockside treasure building. Somebody wanting to buy that and put a residential space above.
That's not above water.
That's on land.
That's something that's different. That's kind of a mixed use of.
What's for a shoreline?
Yeah, but his, you can't have a residence above water.
Over water.
Over water.
This is, this is different.
Okay, well, that's shoreline also, so.
But also a residence. You're saying a residence in a partial zone.
So.
It's hooked up and surely it's hooked up to public water and sewer. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, right. So I can just tell you real quick. So the meeting on July 21st was at the Bluebird Restaurant in Machias. There were supposedly supposed to be like 19 people in attendance. There were 12 of us and one of them was not an elected official, it was Ed. So the purpose of the meeting, which was run by Charles Rutledge and Betsy Fitzgerald, was to discuss the Washington County government's status. And that the community block development grant was not shared and some other money did not come to Washington County because we had no registered agency to receive the money. So the topic of that night, they had three options in moving forward, was to wind down the Washington County of government, to revitalize it and contract for services with the Sunrise County Economic Council or another organization, to establish a new planning commission or council of governments to serve Washington County and contract for services with SEC or another organization, or ask an existing regional planning organization such as Hancock County Planning Commission or the Northern Maine Development Commission to observe Washington County. So what was decided at the meeting was that a letter was going to be sent to the towns that had been involved previously with the suggestion of restarting the council of government with Sunrise Council being the financial, because they are not a registered place either, but the council of government is. So Sunrise County Economic Council could be the fiscal person for the Washington County Council of Government for the Washington County Council of Government because on the hiring of a second person was when they ran into problems and things started falling apart and expenditures of money. So they, but they didn't want to like fill a position again. So coming out of this meeting that I went to, they were sending a letter to all the towns and the only other point of the conversation was that there's this money that comes from the state, I think it was twenty thousand dollars, that could come to Washington County if we reestablished the Washington County Council of Government and the money is like block development grant money. And that, that for the Washington County Council of Government to be really successful and do as much work as it did for all the other, and I think, they didn't know the exact number, but they thought it was like twenty out of possibly thirty pounds that could be in this. That, that was the original numbers back in the day. For it to be as successful and beneficial to all the towns, it would require a financial commitment from the towns again. And the conversation was that instead of asking the, whatever it was before, that they would ask fifty or seven, and the letter came, I see, asking seventy-five percent. So that was my piece and then the letter came to Rachel, so she can do the rest of it now.
Well, if I could add to that, just, one of the things that made Washington County Council of Government so successful was Judy East. She was a powerhouse, a dynamo, and she worked relentlessly for the county and was helpful to any kind of project going on. When she left, the person who replaced her was as ruthless as, she was excellent. I mean, we never had a meeting, nothing ever happened, and we ended up not sending in our dues because it was basically a nothing committee. So even though this may sound very nice, you need to replace this with another Judy East.
I've got no problem putting this on for the next budget in March because, but the town did not raise any money of the sheriff's dues.
Yeah, yeah.
The letters dated August first and our meeting was Thursday.
And I, quite frankly, and I, this is not to cast aspersions against Sunrise County. Can they guarantee the same kind of thing that Judy had? And when I say that, I, I don't say it lightly. I mean, she was a powerhouse.
I think the point of the, part of the conversation that night that I was there, that that's not, it would be exceptional to think that that's going to happen again, to have that kind of, right. And so looking forward, what can they do? But my only other point would be that, you know, because I asked the questions, how many towns were involved before and they thought it was twenty? I went and looked myself, I think there is like thirty-one potential towns or residences in Washington County that could have been members. At the end of it, there was only like six or seven that were still somewhat engaged. That this meeting that was sent out to everybody, there were supposed to be twenty, there was like eleven, you know, so I don't know what the general.
Well, with Sunrise, you know, I know they sent out these newsletters, but aren't they kind of similar to Washington County Council of Governments? Or aren't they trying to be?
Well, they do a lot of assistance work and advocating throughout the county and that kind of piece, but the council of government, I forget the term, it's like a regional financial something or other, that Sunrise Council Economic Council isn't. You know, and every county has to have.
So that's a regional planning organization.
A regioning plan, that's right, because we could get the Hancock County Planning Commission.
You're on that, we shall play, aren't you on that?
Washington County Development.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so that's what it is, a, a.
So does every other county have a regional planning?
That gets the twenty thousand, yes.
So we could start us, or, so Washington County needs a regional planning.
Which is what council of government was.
We don't, we don't have one.
Nope, council of government was it, you know, and then when they dissolved, nobody put in the paperwork annually to get that twenty thousand dollars to Washington County.
It's sitting in limbo.
It's sitting in limbo.
I've got some emails from other county managers about all of this. Callus has voted to support and so has Millbridge.
Well.
Washington County cog two point O, that's what they're calling it.
Oh, okay. And what would be our seventy-five percent? What was our, what was our council of government?
Twelve hundred was in my mind, I think.
Something like that, I don't know, it was in quarter of it, in quarter of it. And then of course they got grants, Judy.
Yeah. Let's say hypothetically, a big project comes along to redo major municipal culverts or something like that. And you'd need the council of governments to do, to help us, to do some research. Would S E E C be able to do that?
The answer just says they're not, they're not the same as the council itself.
No, but they, but they.
They're aiming in that direction?
They're, they're, they're potentially could do that, I mean, like, you know, they.
They have to be certified, I mean, they have to.
Well, they would be the fiscal agent for the council of government which is certified. That's what the conversation was that night that I was there. You could get another, they say, or another organization, like you could get another organization or you could ask Hancock County to combine with Washington County. They were looking at options, you know, and the other option, because they were talking about, you know, dissolve it and make another, but you would be establishing exactly what is already established in the Washington County Council of Government.
Sounds like there's, that would lead them into spinning their wheels.
Right.
Something happened to the Crystal Hitchens that was working so well that.
Yeah, she'd be a good person to talk.
Where did she move to?
She's actually working for Sunrise County Economic Council, but she works out of the Millbridge office.
It's too bad that she didn't want to take over Judy's.
I, you know, she would not have felt qualified because she's humble. But she's probably the second best. And she has her own, you know, she has her own project. She does the, the bike trails and she now is in the Down East Destination.
Oh, yeah.
Program, Wigan, yeah. And so she's got her own projects, but I know this was a very sensitive issue for her. Yeah.
So I could, if you, if you were in favor of supporting it, we just can't do it financially this year. You could have the intention of pitching it for next year's fiscal budget.
I think that would happen to Washington County Council.
Well, they're going to.
I think we should.
They're going to want to look into what it's going to take to restart it.
Yes.
Because I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, once something like that shuts down, it is a pain in the butt.
Yeah.
To get it restarted.
Yeah.
I watched my wife go through it.
Yes, with the change up.
I mean, the admin budget.
Then all of a sudden, there's no change of.
Has a contingency of eight thousand.
Right, that's what I was wondering, what is our contingency on?
Outside of, out of the administrative budget.
What is our?
Eight thousand.
So we could.
We could be.
Because it was seventy-five percent of twelve hundred, you know, like.
Certainly, that's a thousand.
Right, so I mean, I guess I would, I would think that, I would make a motion that we.
Support.
Support the, what, the revitalizing the Washington County Council of Governments.
I'll stop.
And contract.
Sure.
Here we go. Wanda, you're up.
I, I just wanted to say that, I mean, we got it scheduled, I'm sorry, didn't bring you up the copy, but we're wondering again this year if we can shut off, you know, what street by the bank.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bank to Coe Hills.
Carter Johnson's.
Just that part right there.
Right in front of Coe Hills.
Yeah, and we'll still have all of our activities there. And then Mr. Linscott with the parks, we, I sent something to Renee today that, you know, he'll be signing all the necessary paperwork. And we're going to have two porta-potties downtown and.
So what about the boats being launched and?
The what?
The boats having to be launched?
Well, there comes, the invasion, we're going to have the invasion.
Right.
Yeah.
What day is this again? The Saturday of Labor Day?
Yeah, the Saturday before Labor Day.
The third, right?
Yeah. I mean, just if we could shut that down like from nine to even twelve-thirty. And I don't know where you, we got the barricades, fence things there, they had, we had.
We borrowed them from the, the marathon people.
I did Victor have looked at his ones. Yeah, but then they got moved.
They're over the school.
Okay, okay. And that's, that's.
Their story's the LCOC wing, right?
From nine AM to noon on what day?
Twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty.
And, you know, we asked you, what I asked Renee today to be serious, you know, I can't remember what we were.
I managed to watch the boats, I've been on the road today. And we let the boats launch last time, I don't remember now. So we just told the fishermen they all had to get their boats launched by the.
Well, we didn't, no, we didn't.
We didn't shut that off, right?
No, we didn't shut that off, no.
Okay, good.
That's September third.
Yeah.
So it's just that road that's being shut off?
Yeah, just that, you know, just right there, like we did last time.
So why does Mr. Linscott need to be advised? He's not part of that road?
He's not there? Oh, no, he's just, Mr. Linscott's just the boat ramped itself, I think just the.
Oh, for the invasion.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's, it's worked so far, but.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Are we going to vote on that?
Yes, if they're closing something off the road.
I'll make a motion for the road closure.
Yeah.
At Wanda.
I'll second it.
And, you know, I'll say real quick, you guys all know that, but he's got a great band coming this weekend, the Lance, have the Mallett of that weekend, and I think they're, you know, known for.
The Mallett Brothers.
The Mallett Brothers, yeah.
Oh, is that?
David Mallett's son.
Where is he? Is he retired?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Are they going to explain?
What? Down at the Starlet, we, uh, three blocks. On the third, September third.
Yeah, we do the school thing first.
School is good, quick, simple.
Yes.
Do you want me to run over that real quick?
Yes, this is too quick science, quick school science.
Yeah, the, did you see the email from Tina?
Yeah.
We kind of collaborated and applied for this and they got it, but they don't, Tina emailed me saying that they don't have the ability to go down and pick them up. So I would like for permission to use the town crew to take a flat bed to go down Augusta, pick it up and bring it up here and help install them, do whatever it takes to get these things installed.
Sure.
So I think you guys would be in favor.
Absolutely. Done and done.
So motion?
Motion to.
Motion to.
At the town, I'll do all this.
All there.
Get her down.
As long as I'm not the first one that gets caught flashing a red light.
Does she do it?
Yeah.
Want to steal it when she does?
All right, so this is the list of appointments, so we're going to need a motion for all of these people on this list that. I guess I will make a motion for this, maybe we won't get seconds. Renee Gray, the town administrator, town clerk, E nine-one-one officer, Suzanne Francis, treasurer, task court to book people, registrar, roters, general assistants administrator, Suzanne Francis, penny spray deputy, assessor agent, Jimmy Clark, licensed police inspector, Bruce Green, fire chief, Robert Hood, assistant fire chief, Randy Hall, Arrow Tinker, rubber master, Rob Dennison. Someone else can. Health officer, Marlene Gilpatrick, emergency management director, Renee Gray, Carol Dennison, someone else should probably do that. Rachel Rubier, deputy, Washington County Emergency Medical Director, Joanne Hayes, Robert Hood, alternate. I don't think the need is safe for a select ad hoc committee right now, so we'll just pass on that. Board of Appeals, Nancy Bagley, Dan Francis, and he's ruled, Peter Boyce, there's one vacancy. Is it, is it a board of five? Recycling Committee, Gary Rhodes, Rachel Rubier, Kenny Morris, Danny's rule, Marion Transportation Board of Directors, Jason Naviches, Rachel Rubier, alternate. Comprehensive Plan Update Committee, Melissa Lee, Nancy Harrison, and he's ruled, Peter Boyce, Gary Rhodes, William Alex Henry, Rachel Rubier, revolving loan committee, Suzanne Francis, Renee Gray, Dan Wagner, Cecil Moore, Peter Boyce, Kenneth Bradley, Michael Scovani. Economic Development Committee, Rachel Rubier, Janice Rule, Renee Gray, Nancy Harrison, Rhonda Welkman, Ben Lebec, Martha Howell, harbor board, Dan Wagner, Peter Boyce, Ricky Wright, Rusty Jackson, James Fitzgerald, Derek Light, Lyons, Sean Kerikoff. Planning Board, William Alex Henry, Sharon H, John Nielsen, Rhonda Welkman, Georgiana Brown, Bill Nicky, and Jackson, alternate. And a couple of these on front order alternates too, but we'll have to figure that out later. Shelf fish committee vacant, selection is vacant, so we need to appoint someone, someone needs to volunteer to be on the shelf fish committee.
Yeah, well.
She did her year.
I did my year.
Josh, Joshua Wines, Mike Scovani, James Fitzgerald, John Nielsen, Aylson, Tracy Sawtell. I've done my five years. So I don't know who wants to do that, but. Dan, you think you can do that for a year? Jason?
Do my work schedule?
What's a month?
No.
You're a good thing, Dan.
All right, Dan.
Mind you guys switch, Nancy and Dan switch. Nancy of harbor, I put Nancy on the harbor board.
She's already on, Nancy's on the, the main celebration, all those committees.
Economics.
Wanda Matthews, Shirley Brown, Vanita Lyons, Danny Simmons, Anne Seavey, Diane.
Falcon.
Falcon, Joe Falcon, Barbara Thompson, Mark Olson, Susan Olson, Joel Ross, Mary Ramsell.
I will second that.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the positions that Carol was approving.
That I can do, harbor master in month, and any things that I was supposed to be doing.
Right.
Well, we can approve the first one first, right?
Oh, yes, I'm in favor of everything but what I couldn't make a motion for.
All the.
Now we can make a motion, make a motion to accept.
Ralph.
Ralph. And.
I'm an emergency.
Emergency Management Director.
Yeah, I will second that, all favored.
Okay, so now it's the signing, may the signing begin. Now, we only need three signatures on each page, so that's going to make it any easier. So once you see three people sign, just go down.
Can I speak while you're signing? I'll just do my last two things.
Yes.
All right, so one more thing for you to sign, you want to make a motion to another business, is the annual payment for the adult ed that we do out of the CD, Suzanne has prepared the document to withdraw that, that yearly amount that'll go to adult.
I know we had last year.
I know. So that's that.
Is it every one in the paperclip?
Just the front, just the front one? No, no, is anything that's got that, those lines, those five lines.
Okay, so every one of them, okay.
They're probably all grouped together by the day. They're grouped together by the day. You gotta get that in back, if they're grouped together, they got, let's start over, okay, so.
So the last thing I have to mention is the Project Canopy Grant that David Stockford applied for us a couple of years ago. We got an extension on it last year. That extension ran out June thirtieth. I've not been able to get a hold of Mr. Stockford.
He's still, I understand.
Yeah, I'm not, I haven't heard, other than, yeah, but. What I did was, we have, the town has a. The town has a CD that the funds are earmarked to maintain the monument, the war monument, and so.
This is in regards to the trees.
That's the paperclip from one of the, they sent down.
The trees that had to be cut down, the public has been wondering when we're going to plant some back. So today I went and purchased five scarlet oak trees and.
Perfect.
I've emailed the Lebec Garden Club to get their expertise and assistance. And we'll get those trees planted and saving.
Cool beans.
I'll make a board.
It was three.
If I could add too, when I was looking at the report from the, the septic program, the comments from the inspector and all looked like he's exhausted and we know Bruce is exhausted, but at the same time, between the lines is that Bruce is certainly doing everything possible to keep it running until these said parts arrive, that were supposed to be last year and not supposed to be this one.
I'm really want to say that anybody else I just.
So kudos to Bruce and the team out there for, keep that work.
And we hired the, the part timer, he's working out well as well.
Oh, good.
That's all I have.
I just want you to know, I'm signing more than anybody else on this table.
That's a school teacher.
May I speak?
Yes.
Is there going to be an opportunity for a public comment?
Public comment. There are enough.
Oh, oh.
There is public comment.
Speak. I will be sending you folks, because you may have interest. I may have sent a couple of them today, we may have been to you. Articles and writers setting forth the, the plan and parameters for the national park that's going to be unveiled in Hancock and Washington counties by Angus King and the federal government.
Where's it going to be?
Pardon?
Where's it going to be in the national park?
Uh, in the county of Washington and Hancock County.
Oh, is this where the veterans?
Pardon?
No location.
Is this the Worcester project?
That's, that's to be determined, that's going to be determined, that's being planned. And the major planners are the federal government, National Park Service, of course Angus King, College of the Atlantic, Maine Coasterity Trust, and Sunrise Economic Council, will be leading, the lead, uh, crystal of it. They're already good to Machias for it and explaining the, the purpose and all the goodness of this, this national park plan.
Okay.
And this is a plan that was unveiled back in eighty-six, eighty-seven, when Angus was governor. But it didn't work out because it didn't have a clout or the money backing it to be realized at the time, it was promoted by the state. Well, he's a senator now and he's gone to Washington and he's. Well, he's a senator now, and he's on in Washington, and he's got a hay, hay belt full of money.
You're sure you're not signing your own name?
And they are gonna be paying Sunrise Economic Council to promote this plan, right out of the federal government coffers. So, whatever rules the National Park Service uses to establish parks will be overlaid over the entirety of Washington and Hancock counties, they plan to expand basically the eighty of parks all the way up to the Canadian border through these two counties, and I thought it might be interesting, some of the information that I've uncovered, that's, that details some of the, some of the plans in a way that will be implemented.
We should put that on the agenda, I know it's, they're halfless.
Yeah.
This has nothing to do with the Blueberry Baron, whatever his name is.
The Worcester project?
The Worcester project.
It may have, because what they're going to do is they're going to develop, flag will, there will be cause of population determined, where they leave the population to be concentrated.
I think Renee wants to put on the agenda, but I appreciate you telling us, because I can't really pay attention.
I understand.
But could we, could you be here for it to be on the agenda, if it's important stuff?
Well, what do we know, I mean, we don't know where it's, where it's going, or.
I'm sending you information that will give you initially an overview of the.
Like a map.
And they haven't, they haven't set forth the lands that they want to acquire, or eminent domain, acquire, acquire.
We're gonna still have that.
This is a, this is an effort that's going to be run by the National Park Service.
Yeah.
And plan. And one thing about the National Park Service is when they're given a mission to establish a park, that's exactly what they do.
Okay, so we want a park, is there anything controversial that we're worried about?
Well, I think, I think we need to understand what, what land parcels, there's a provision where what they do is they.
Do they take it by eminent domain or something?
Yes, they can.
Oh, okay.
And they can create with the plan, they can create islands, and then take the land and create.
Well, we just had that with Gil Butler, you know, I mean, he, he's not paying any taxes.
He didn't do it by eminent domain.
And he didn't do it by eminent domain, absolutely.
I have to interrupt, I need to make a motion that we sign aboard papers saying that Suzette Francis, our treasurer, can withdraw from the town Lebec Adult Ed CD account, the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred, to pay for the annual twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three education program.
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm gonna go, but I only bring this up because I think it's important that you all and the people know what's going on relative to the government's planning land use.
We'll put it on the agenda.
There we go.
Well, it might not be our land, the national park may not end up here, correct?
No, it's going to be all of Washington County.
What, what do you mean, the whole Washington County's gonna be a national park?
Yes.
They've declared, there was actually a, I forget the.
A heritage.
The law, they, they declared.
Oh, world heritage site?
Right, they declared like.
All of Washington County and all Hancock County.
Yes, most of Maine, a big chunk of New England, they declared a national heritage, like the plus of like the Indian history and the, you know, and that there is this.
What is the tax implications on that? We can't, what about, what is the development on that? There's a really big deal.
There's gonna be issues, yes, but what kinds of development are they going to discourage by the plan itself?
Well, already, just with the safe harbor project permitting, we had to get permission from the tribal council and all, all kinds of permission from all over, that we weren't gonna disturb any artifacts, or if we found any, I mean, that's already in, in effect.
Well, imagine it, that, well, that's just, it's something that you folks need to look at, and, and monitor.
That one goes such like.
And, and it may, it may work its way into our.
Understanding.
Into your general plan, or whatever, what do you call it, the.
Comprehensive plan.
Huh?
Comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan, because you do have, I guess you got a committee now, rather than a planning board?
No, it's, it's a couple of people from the planning board, a couple of people from the citizens, a couple, a couple of selectmen, there's a, there's like eight people on it, correct?
Yep.
Your chair is Melissa Lee.
Yes.
She, she works for the main co-heritage trust. They are a, they are a primary driver of the minus plan.
He's survived claims, and so.
I'll just mention one more thing.
Sure.
During the election, the, there was a write-in position for budget committee.
Thank you, Jim.
And.
You're welcome.
There was one person that got more votes than it, two votes versus the one that everybody else got, so, he declined. The next person that I thought maybe would be a natural fit was Georgina Brown Delmick, she was on the ballot for another position.
For the budget committee?
Yeah, and she said that she would do it, so.
Okay, great.
You don't have to sign anything, because she would be technically elected, but if you guys are all in favor, how would she be technically elected? Because she's voted, somebody, somebody voted for her.
Somebody put her in that line?
Somebody voted for her once, yep.
Oh, well done.
So, okay, I'll just get your.
Works for me, she said yes.
Oh, making a motion, oh, making a motion to adjourn, right?
Are we adjourned?
Yeah.
I'm still writing my name.
We only had a big three, how come that's?
Because I'm, I'm number three here.
Yeah, so all the other, that's not the warrants, that's all the others.
Oh, you're the middle.
The first half of the.
Yes, you are, thank you very much.
See, it's a do the one on both sides, that's really funny. Don't sign yours, or it'll be, it won't be valid.
Where is mine?
Here's, are little assistant coming this Saturday? Our little assistant is probably at.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know. I just wanted. Really, I'm down. Can we adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn, second.
All paper?
Okay.
We adjourned.
See you guys.
We'll see you here tomorrow, if we still decide.
Yeah. Thanks for sitting in the middle.
Good night, everybody.
No kidding.
If you wanna take some of these.